When we go ahead. I would like to call the July 29th, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Fenton Community High School District 100 Regular Board Meeting to order. Uh, Mary, may I have a roll call?
Yes. Jallowick?
Yes, here.
Peyton Howell?
Here.
Figaroa? Rago?
Here.
Ramirez? Ting Pah Pong? Weedeman?
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. Um, if everyone can please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, one tribe, one home.
Okay, thank you. Um, James, could you please read our Fenton Mission, Belief, and Bison Way Statements?
Of course. Our mission statement: Cultivate successful, passionate learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Our belief statements: Successful, passionate learners thrive when we champion innovative teaching and engaged learning. School and home collaborative collaborate effectively. We provide a safe, secure, and caring environment. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. Diversity empowers our learning and community. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibilities. The Bison Way: Students and adults at high school create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Okay, thank you, James. All right, we move on now to one of my favorite parts, the student recognitions. Uh, James?
Yes, we will recognize two teams this evening, Fenton Chess Team and Fenton's FCCLA Team, which stand for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. We're having a little bit of, uh, difficult technicalities here.
Hold on one moment.
We're having, uh, technical difficulties. Um, we can't make the video to work at this time. We will recognize our chess team and our FCCLA team at our August Board meeting. If that's okay with everybody.
Okay. Okay, then, um, yeah, let's make sure we do that on the next meeting. Um, let's move on to the public comments, James. Do we have any requests for public comments?
We do not.
Okay, all right, thank you. Then the district report. Um, first one is fall learning plans. I believe that's Yovan and Michelle?
That would be me.
Okay.
Turn off that, yep, we will jump in here in a second. Thank you, Mr. Weedeman. There are two items for the District 100 reports. First, we will present our, present the fall learning plan for school year 2021. I want to recognize the board for their continued support of our students, parents, and our community during this global pandemic. These are both novel and stressful ti- times. Thank you, Board. The outcome or goal is to report to the Board of Education our opening, our reopening plan for the school year 2020 and 2021. What is our fall learning plan? In other words, how will we start the school year? Fenton Community High School District 100 will start the school year with a bolstered Remote Learning 2.0 on August 12th, and transition to hybrid learning with a target date of September 14th. Our fall learning plan is safe, strategic, and logical. What are the priorities and factors that drove our fall learning plan? There are eight factors. It places students at the center of our planning efforts. It's based on safety and wellness of students, families, staff, and community. It's married to our three priorities, which we have established since the middle of March. They are, number one, safety and wellness, which includes feeding our students. Number two, continued learning. And number three, on-time communication. The four priority. The plan adheres and ma- uh, adheres to the mandated health and safety guidelines from the Public Health Department and regu- regulating agencies, which includes the Illinois State Board of Education, Illinois Department of Public Health, DuPage County Public Health, and the state of Illinois. Our plan is logical, strategic, and flexible in order to pivot from one en- from one environment to another environment. It supports learning, supports our students, and supports our staff. It incorporates the surveys and feedbacks from our families and staff, which we have collected this last few months. And lastly, this is the best option we have with the current situation concerning COVID-19. In addition, our plan incorporates incorporates a bolstered, new and improved remote learning, which we titled Remote Learning 2.0, to indicate that it is a better learning package than the spring remote learning. Establishing Remote Learning 2.0 in the beginning of the year is logical and strategic for a successful year. By starting remotely, it will make the transition to hybrid learning smoother for students, parents, and staff. Hybrid learning is composed of remote learning and in-person learning. In addition, in case we have to revert back to remote learning due to a surge of COVID-19 when we are in hybrid learning, our students and staff can move easily back to remote learning because we have established it at the beginning of the year. We will present Remote Learning 2.0 in more details in a few minutes. Next, I want to acknowledge and applaud our teachers and administrators for putting in hundreds of hours revising and creating our fall learning plan. During these last four months, we've had two task force, Remote Learning Task Force and Hydler- Hybrid Learning Task Force. These teams collaborated and worked on the creation of our remote and hybrid plans. There were a strong sense, there was a strong sense of unity, and without this unity, the journey would have been more challenging and arduous. Again, applause to this team. With us today is Patrick Escobedo, English teacher and president of the Fenton Education Association. Patrick?
Thank you, James. Uh, can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
President Weedeman, members of the board, um, I just have a short statement and then I'd like to speak actually about the hybrid and remote learning plan a bit. Uh, first, thank you for the opportunity to speak and participate in this presentation. Uh, since last spring, I feel like everything we have come to know and love about teaching has been turned on its head. The joy of working with our students side by side and watching them grow as individuals quite suddenly became impossible in the face of COVID-19. Instead, for the health and safety of our staff, students, and community, we were driven to find creative ways to educate from home. And in the face of these incredible circumstances, my union brothers and sisters rose to the occasion. I am always proud to be president of the FEA and never so much as in the last five months. The dedication, creativity, and support demonstrated by my fellow teachers has been truly inspiring, but we could not have done it alone. On behalf of the association, I would like to thank our Board of Education and our administration for the collaboration and support during this uncertain time. From the difficult decision to close the school, to the constantly evolving nature of remote learning last spring, to the planning for remote and hybrid learning this year, the FEA has remained a strong partner. Our voice has been heard, and together, we have developed plans for learning in this time that are in the best interests of all of our stakeholders. That this spirit of collegiality and collaboration will continue as we start this year. The association knows that this decision, uh, that the decisions facing the board administration now are rife with political and social implications. We know that we cannot make everyone happy. This is an impossible situation in many ways, one for which none of us were trained or prepared. It is complex and constantly evolving, and the stakes for getting this right could not be higher. But we are confident that in working together, we will continue to make decisions that keep our students, staff, and community safe. So, thank you on behalf of the association again. Um, and if you look at this list of names that participated in the remote and hybrid task force, I think that tells an amazing story. Um, that is more than 25% of your teaching staff in coordination with almost your entire administration. Uh, and being part of that remote task force, I can say, we met for something in the area of 16 to 20 hours after school got out to really plan and improve on our remote learning from last spring. Um, and the atmosphere in there was truly collegial. Um, I was continually impressed with the voices and contributions from our teaching staff, including, if you look, actually, we have newer teachers on this team, and I think that really speaks to the dedication and the creativity and the desire to do this the best that we can on the part of people like Amy Vasquez or Garrett Yerger, Matthew Sade. Um, in addition, you know, I want to really thank Yovan and James and Sam for being very proactive, being very available during this time, showing real leadership on that team, and allowing, especially in the remote task force, I can't speak to the hybrid task force, we have a three-week-old daughter, so I was not a part of it. Um, but in the remote task force, you know, there is a real sense that we weren't, we were collaborating, we were truly working together um, in the interest of everybody there, and that often led us to places where subcommittees were formed to deal with specific issues that arose. You know, we addressed issues of pedagogy, of grading, of communication, of interventions we were going to put in place for students when they're struggling. Um, and it was a, an atmosphere that, in the face of a really difficult set of circumstances, gave me the confidence to respond to teachers who were contacting me really uncertain, really anxious about this current situation, uh, to tell them, look, we are working with our administration, we are working to make the best decision for all the stakeholders involved. Um, and I can't thank you enough for that, I think that's a really important thing to be able to communicate to our teaching staff, but also to our community. You know, I think, um, I said this repeatedly in conversations with various people. I feel like what we developed was a real model that other districts follow in terms of just working together and really trying to find the best solutions that are right for our kids and for our families and for our staff. Um, and lastly, I just want to say, I think that this is a really uncertain time, and James shared dates that we have in mind. Um, but I think maybe the best, the best element of all this has been the ongoing nature of responding to the situation with each other. Right, that there isn't a set, well, we must do this, we're really following the data, we're following the best science available, the best practices available, um, and working together in a continual fashion to make the best decisions for everybody involved. So, uh, it was a pleasure to be on the remote task force. Um, Michelle, I think you were on both, so you've logged many, many hours in these meetings, and I don't know if you wanted to mention anything about the hybrid task force, but, uh, I think you've done really amazing work together.
Thanks, Mr. Escobedo. Michelle?
Thanks, Patrick. I think your sentiments are shared wholeheartedly. Um, it's really been a pleasure to work alongside of so many really, um, dedicated staff at the administrative level and at the teaching level, and, um, I think we've put together some really meaningful and rigorous plan. I think it's really important to also talk about the many people who aren't on this list. Um, all of our teachers have been working this summer to prepare for the upcoming fall school year. Um, the professionalism of them to ensure a rigorous and meaningful experience for this fall has been outstanding. Our instructional coaches and our instructional technology coordinators have provided a series of seminars, or you might call them spring classes. Our staff has already participated, I just checked last week, in over, well over 300 seminars to get ready for the school year and learn how to use new teaching strategies in a distance learning setting and how to use new technology tools. So, we think they're along the way, we don't think the work is done on that end, but we definitely think that they have showed a level of professionalism to really do what is needed to ensure a great start of the school year for our students. So, my sentiments are shared, Patrick, thank you for all of that.
And congratulations, Patrick, on your newborn.
Thank you, she's delightful, she's wonderful. Eleanor Beatrice Ginsburg Escobedo, she's, you know, poor child, quite a few names there.
Congratulations, she's beautiful.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. All right, this slide describes our Remote Learning Plan 2.0, okay? I'll just start off quickly and let Michelle take over, but in reality, it's a bolstered Remote Learning 2.0. It's more rigorous, more communication, more participation for our parents and students, more support for our students. It's synchronous learning, that means basically the teachers with our students, there's more structure, attendance is in accountability, grading is back, and it's sustainable. Michelle, you want to dive into a little more details?
Sure, of course, thanks, James. Um, I think James mentioned this earlier, I, I think the most important part of this work was that we listened to the voices of our stakeholders along the way, and we sent out surveys, um, early on and midway through, uh, or early on and then after to really get a sense of what worked and what didn't. So, um, what we learned, oh, we, everybody needs to mute, I'm sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback. So, what we learned was that our parents, first and foremost, appreciated the efforts of the staff, but they were seeking clear communication about our expectations. So, what we did in our plan, you can see across the top, is we built in a, a dedicated time for parent communication so we can support the home learning environment. We also will be sending out a weekly outline every single Monday for each of our classes so our parents can help support in the home learning environment and have a clear sense of what will be happening throughout that week. We expect that that will be going out every Monday by 10 o'clock. Then we listened to what our teachers said, and what they said is they were very proud of our students, but they were concerned about their participation and sometimes their level of engagement. So, we built into, we built in support. We said we're going to have dedicated office hours. You will see that across the nine o'clock block. Those will be held at least three days a week and will be published at the beginning of each week. We also dedicated a whole afternoon on Mondays for a support system. So, students who aren't on track, they will be receiving an accountability mentor or an academic tutor to help them during that time. We also will have a continued level of social-emotional support and tech support at the ready. Then we listened to our students, and our students were grateful for the support of their teachers in a pretty scary time. And some really liked the flexibility of where, what the situation they were in, but many crave more structure. So, what we did was we created a balanced structure with much more synchronous learning, but still opportunities for asynchronous learning. And the synchronous learning schedule runs from 10 to 3 every day, where students will be expected to be available for live sessions with their teachers. And they'll still be involved in asynchronous learning for the courses on the days that they are not live. So, they'll have a little flexibility when they can get that, that classwork completed. One other, um, outlining, or one other factor that all stakeholders agreed on, students, teachers, and parents, was that we were concerned about the motivation and accountability for learning. So, we looked heavily at our grading practices, and we're going back to pre-COVID practices. Um, and we also wanted to make sure that we were involving, um, attendance, um, in more than just a check-in each day, but also within each of the live periods or live classes that the students are to attend. So, there's a double layer of attendance being taken every day for students as well. We think overall this will be a much more rigorous and meaningful experience for students. We'll continue to seek feedback along the way. We already are developing a plan for how and where that will take place, and we will adjust as needed, but we hope, we hope and feel confident that this is a strong start to the school year.
Thanks, Michelle. This next slide is our hybrid learning plan. Uh, just real quickly, before Yovan jumps in here and provide more, more detail, we believe this is dynamic and flexible, it's aligned with our remote learning plan, there's accountability, ability built in, attendance, more communication again with parents and students, more participation in regards to students, and it's very supportive for folks needing help. Yovan?
Sure, thanks, James. Um, I apologize for my icon, my, uh, internet's a little bit unstable, so I don't want to turn my camera on and lose you guys, but, um, as you can take a look, the, the blended hybrid model mirrors the periods exactly as did the remote learning. Uh, we're trying to make it as consistent as possible, um, if and when we move to a hybrid model that our students are in that same mode. So, uh, you know, if you look, it's period four again that starts the day, uh, three to eight, it's all in a block schedule timeframe, so it's about an, uh, about 65 minutes. Um, what we're trying to do is maximize the amount of time the, excuse me, the students are with their instructors and their teachers, um, so that we can maximize the learning that occurs during that time. Um, and, um, so it does mirror exactly. The reasons that we have, uh, period four, five, and eight, six, as we do, is we're trying to minimize the number of students within the building at any given time. So, four, five, and six are our lunches, and period eight, we have early release for our seniors. Um, so again, we're trying to, to get, um, minimal capacity within the building. So, um, so that's why we, we kind of, we call boxed or cornered these, uh, these courses. Uh, again, the idea on that Monday is that, well, that would be a remote timeframe. Um, moving to remote, as everybody in this country has done, we realize that our teachers just need more time, um, whether it's professional learning or opportunities to meet with each other to make sure that, uh, the courses are similar as they go forward. Um, so that Monday is very, very important for us, and it also allows students to catch up, have opportunities for them to, to catch up with teachers, uh, catch up on some of their independent or, um, as Michelle referred to, asynchronous work that's being done. It also gives us an opportunity to support some students that might need extra help, um, for, if they're not, uh, being as successful as we'd like to see them, whether that was in the remote setting or now also in the hybrid setting. Um, so you see that towards the end of the day. Um, we do have, uh, student dismissal about 1:20. Um, that, by blocking it this way, we don't have students that are congregating in our lunchrooms. Um, as you know, by, um, by the guidance, we're only allowed 50 per space, um, and we have way more than 50 that would have to be in the lunchroom at any given time. So, uh, by dismissing students at 1:20, having them come in at 8:30, um, it gives them, we don't have to then have students congregate in, in any of those spaces. Again, you see, we have time for family engagement, we have office hours in the morning, which allows for students to, um, I'm sorry, allows for, for teachers to continuously, um, update parents as needed, to work with students if necessary. Um, that could be usual, it could be in a remote setting if it's during the student assistance hours, it could be if students are coming in. Um, so that's, that's what the schedule looks like in general. We have taken a look and we've, we've done the numbers over and over again, and what we figured out is that an A-through-L split for blue and an M-through-Z split for our cohorts for orange puts us nearly about the same numbers. They're fairly close in terms of, uh, 740 to 758, 760, something of that nature. Um, so it, it cuts our student population in half, uh, for each. Um, so it, it cuts our student population in half, uh, for each of those two days. Um, so again, it mirrors our remote, it allows for half of the student body to come in, um, twice a week. Um, we are cons, we, we will constantly be cleaning, and I know that Sam's going to talk about that maybe a little bit later, but um, those are, those are priorities for us as well. There's an attendance every single day for students. Um, students that are not in the building, um, on their cohort day, uh, they will have independent, again, asynchronous work that will open, uh, given to them through, by their teacher, um, either on that Monday or from that previous time that they either had a live, uh, opportunity or that they had um, other supports that they were working with. So, uh, again, it mirrors our remote. It's a consistent, uh, idea for students, half the students in the, in, in the building um, as we move, uh, or if when we need to move to a, a hybrid setting.
Thanks, Yovan. Throughout this crisis, we have partnered with the state and local agencies, which includes DuPage Regional Office of Education, the DuPage School District, including District Two and District Seven, NEDSEC, our association, FEA, and FLOS, and the Village of Bensonville and Wooddale. These partnerships are essential and will continue to collaborate, and we will continue to collaborate with our partners throughout the school year.
James, can I interrupt you for just a second? Um, if you have a parent that, um, does not feel comfortable sending their, their child to school and would like to do, um, remote learning after that September date, is that something that's a possibility, or are we just, um, thinking that all kids will just be in person at that point?
That's a great question, Juliette, and that's something that we are continuing to discuss. As you know, there was a uh, a mandate, uh, from the Illinois State Board of Education. Uh, if a family, a parent or guardian requests for a fully remote learning plan during a, the hybrid plan, uh, we must, um, provide them that service. So we're working on that, Juliette. We have some possibilities. Uh, that came out last week, so all school district in Illinois are trying to create that right now, including Fenton, but I believe we could come up with a solution. Great question. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's our partnership that I, I just discussed. This next slide right here. As you all know, Illinois is in phase four of the Restore Illinois framework. In addition, the Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health Department provided schools with guidelines. Both regulating agencies reiterated the following mandates for schools. So everyone has to do this, right? Require, and you guys know this, require face mask, require social distancing of six feet, conduct symptoms, temperature checks, and screening, increase school-wide cleaning and disinfection, uh, prohibit more than fifty individuals from gathering space in one space. This right here, this next slide from the Illinois Department of Public Health, okay, uh, took place about a couple of weeks ago. So a couple of weeks ago, the DuPage Superintendent has requested a flow chart from the Illinois Department of Public Health regarding symptomatic guidelines for school. Basically, it's, hey, could you make this real simple for us? Because you put, you're putting something every week, you know? Uh, and, uh, in particular, we want a flow chart, uh, to follow when situation arise. So in short, we wanted a procedure from the Public Health Department when students and/or staff feel sick or have a temperature. Okay, we want a procedure when a student and/or staff has been clinically evaluate, evaluated of having COVID by, by a healthcare provider, and they have delivered. Unfortunately, still in draft form. And once this is complete and formalized, we will follow this as, as you know. But right now, it's a draft form. I really like where they're going. I think they're going to finalize this next week. Um, so this is very helpful for all public schools and private schools all over the state. Next slide is safety, and Sam will review some of the safety requirements that we started since March. Sam?
Okay, thank you, James. So, uh, as we've, we've pointed out numerous times already in this meeting in the past week, safety is our number one priority, and we've been working, uh, behind the scenes, a lot of people trying to make sure that we have the safest environment as possible here. And I think it's important to note that even currently right now, even though we are not, um, in the, in the, in the school year, you know, we do have our buildings and ground staff working here. We do have clerical people working here, food distribution. So really, we've been working on safety all throughout this time because the safety of our employees is, is of the utmost importance. Um, so, you know, so this has already kind of been in effect, but obviously we're gearing up for the start of the school year. Uh, next week, we have textbook pickup, so we'll have people in the building. We have had, uh, various points of the year where, where our students and parents have been in the building. When you look at, uh, senior drop-off, pickup of items, same thing with, with other students, and, and it's just been a a great partnership. It's been a very safe and orderly environment. So we're going to continue with that, but obviously we're gearing up toward the school year. Uh, and much, much of what I'm going to talk about here has to do with, uh, i- if we are in a hybrid setting at some point, we are, are planning tirelessly toward that, which is what we need to do to be prepared i- if, if that transition occurs. So let's look at PPE. So we hear, we hear a lot about masks. We already have over two thousand masks on hand. We also are part of that partnership with the state that many of you may have heard of, that cloth masks are going to be provided for students and staff. We've ordered those. We, we haven't received them yet, but, but we hear they're on the way. We've also ordered over two hundred face shields. Uh, some are more flexible than others, you know, shield that looks something like this that, that, you know, can bend and conform and not too heavy, so it's agile and something that, that people could use if they want to. And we know the, the guidance says that face shields, uh, are not as good as masks. However, we're providing them anyway because some people maybe, uh, feel better about, about those shields. So we're, we're providing those. We also have installed already in many locations of the building like plastic shields, like at, at the reception type area, like for when our registrar is working with families, just that added layer protection, much like you see in in stores, uh, have done. We're also doing that locally. We've also purchased over two thousand pairs of gloves on hand, so we're taking this real seriously. Uh, we, we want to have a stockpile because you never know when there could be a run on, on these types of items. But we're also working with our nurse. I'd like to shout out to Jill because Jill's been great and, and letting us know what she needs and what, what she believes we need for the school. So we're working closely with her also. So, um, you know, clearly there's guidelines about social distancing, uh, six feet apart. You know, we're going to have a lot of signage throughout the building. There's some examples there on the right-hand side of the slide. But, you know, the, the, the idea is to inundate everyone who's coming to Fenton. Uh, once we, once we really get started with, with signage, reminding people to wash their hands, um, reminding to keep social distancing and, and those types of recommendations so that, um, we have a safe environment. So obviously, that's a big part of what, what, what we're going to be doing is the distancing and clearly the, the wearing of masks in the, in the building. Uh, we've spent a lot of time with cleaning processes. Tom Cobble's been great as he's starting his, his second year with us. Uh, he knows the building and he knows how to keep schools safe and, and, and he's doing a great job for us. But clearly, we're, we're cleaning every night like we normally do. Uh, we, we added our disinfecting procedures, much like we've done in past years during flu season. That's become commonplace now as far as what, what we're, what we're cleaning on top of disinfecting. Uh, we've also invested in hydrostatic backpack machines, which basically you spray and fog the whole, the whole room and disinfect the whole room. So we're going to have, you know, at least two, two nights a week, uh, a concerted even deep cleaning that will take place in between, if it's in a hybrid setting, in between when the two different student groups come in, uh, just for that added, added extra layer of safety. So we've invested in that and, and, uh, updated our cleaning procedures. Some other highlights are, are temperature checks. As you, as you may or may not have heard, uh, you know, there's two choices, either self-certification or actual temperature checks for, for students. We decided to go with the temperature check for students, so what we're going to do is we're gonna, well, we've already basically purchased uh, two thermal scanner cameras for the main entrance. And so when students are coming in, we'll ask them the basic health questions as they enter the building, and also it scans, it takes your temperature within seconds. And so we would rather do that than try to rely on some sort of self-certification by, by adults, uh, off-site. Uh, we think it's real-time safety and literally, you know, the guideline is a hundred point four fever or above, literally. If, if we have a kid coming into school with a fever, they may not realize it straight down, uh, to, to where the nurse will, will screen them further to see what their issues are. So, uh, we're, we're very pleased, a lot of background work, trying to find the right system that's out there so that we can do that. For our employees, we're going to do that, the self-certification. Uh, you know, we but quite honestly, we trust our adults to be able to self-certify that they don't, uh, have a fever and don't have, uh, the potential symptoms of COVID. But we're also going to keep a database. Uh, we partnered with Frontline, who's done our, uh, teacher absence system. And so we already use Frontline, and Frontline has, has an app and, uh, an online system where a teacher, uh, a teacher assistant, uh, secretary, every morning, boom, self-certify, I don't have any symptoms prior to coming in the building. So i- i- we stay true to this. We'll be able to check everyone, and, and adults can check themselves just to make sure that that, uh, we're going to have a safe environment. So that's our plan there. Um, classrooms, we, we're looking at each classroom. As, as you guys saw when we were looking uh, several months back about our, we do have some small classrooms. So if you look at situations where half the number of kids would be in the classroom, in many cases, that's maybe twelve, thirteen, fourteen students, but we're, we're already looking at uh, how to line up desks. We're doing that currently in the capacity for each room so that it's a safe environment where the desk is facing forward. Um, and, uh, the teacher, unfortunately, the teacher won't have much, too much mobility in a hybrid setting just to keep safe and keep our six-feet distance. Uh, but, but that's kind of, kind of what, what we're, we're working with. So we're looking at capacities for each room and, and how we can rearrange what is in there, uh, to maximize the space. Uh, hallways, we're going to have directional hallways and directional staircases. Uh, and that's why we're, we, we had to account for a ten-minute passing period because literally it's going to take longer. You may have to take a longer route around the building so that people are not, you know, crossing each other. Couple other quick things. We're not going to have lockers. Lockers slow down kids. It takes up space in the hallway. Quite honestly, many kids don't even use lockers anymore. So we're going to do things like that. We're going to take a look at our bathrooms that have a specific capacity. Um, as far as that goes, so that, and signage, as far as, you know, only so many people can be in a bathroom at a certain time. We also have our security staff that's going to be there to remind students about uh, things like to keep moving or, or they know that a bathroom is a capacity that they'll need to wait. Um, and that, that will hopefully take that ten-minute passing period into effect. Other safety things like our water fountains, um, basically are going to be the bottle fill only, not the push button because that leads to a lot more uh, touching and things like that and, 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 uh, germs. But, uh, actually, I skipped disinfecting. Uh, that's part of what we're focusing on too, where we've already added, uh, dispensers throughout the school. Uh, we've ordered dispensers for each room and also pumps of, uh, of, uh, Purell, uh, so that, so that kids can, you know, come in the room, make sure they, they get, uh, Purell'd, if that's, if that's a proper term, colloquial term, and, uh, and as they leave, uh, more, more, more Purell. So anyway, that's part of the plan as well, as far as, as well as disinfecting wipes. And then, of course, food service. We talked briefly, I think, about the grab-and-go concept. We, you won't go, like Yovan said, we can only have fifty students in a room, a large room, so lunches is, is problematic to store in, in one location. But we condensed the student schedule to grab and go to make sure they have a, a lunch and earlier in the day of breakfast. So we will, uh, adjust our typical food service to be able to accommodate that. And, and finally, uh, transportation, we've also added, there will be temperature checks uh, prior to loading the bus. A typical bus has twenty-four seats, and so we're looking to make sure that, uh, ideally, we just have one person per seat just to keep that distance. We can have up to fifty students per seat for the ISB guidance, but we think we can, if we're creative, uh, you know, we can arrange it so we're not overcrowding those buses. So, um, I'm sure there's questions, other things to clarify, so I'll stop talking and, uh, start listening.
Can I ask a question about transportation? Um, does that mean that they'll be in, um, hiring of, um, more bussers? Do we need to have more buses, more bus drivers, increased cost?
Ju- Juliette, I could answer that question. We are not planning to hire more bus drivers or purchase any more bus. Will there be more runs, uh, throughout the week during hybrid? Uh, we did that calculation. There will be, I, I think a total of three more, uh, bus runs per week. So there is some expenses, uh, there.
Per day, thanks, per day.
Go ahead, Yovan.
It's, uh, it's per day based on the, uh, lunch, on the, um, lunches, that's why.
Okay.
Yeah, no, the other, that's a great question. The other thing, just to add that, that James alluded to is there's times where we have lunch periods, like at, at different parts, like at the beginning or the end of the day, and what that does is some students may leave earlier, and we could look at like area run routes perhaps, or a student may start later um, because they may have a lunch the first period that we're meeting or, or not have a class or something along those lines. So we could do an area route or a second run to bring those students in. Um, so, you know, we're going to have a plan and then probably have to adjust that plan initially to see who's actually riding the buses. Um, we did ask the question on the bus, but transportation, it, it appears there may be some people that maybe won't utilize transportation that in the past have, which is their choice. Uh, so, uh, we don't, won't know that for sure until we actually start, but that's a possibility too.
Also, students will be assigned seats, so that way we know, uh, for contact tracing purposes. So students can't, can't just sit anywhere. They will be assigned seats when they come into the bus.
Thanks, Sam. Thanks, Yovan.
A quick question, um, in regards to a hybrid situation in the classroom. Um, apologies if you, if you mentioned it, Sam, but after there's class in a classroom, are, are, do the students spray down their desks then before they leave? Or or is there, or is, or is that then done when, when the whole, uh, classroom is empty?
Right, good question. So the, the guidance certainly doesn't mandate like, uh, like some sort of a cleaning in between class periods, but what we do, uh, intend to have is the materials there for a teacher, if they want to spray down their desk or disinfecting or disinfecting wipes to wipe their desk and sort of, and the same thing for students. So while there won't, there won't be like an orchestrated, uh, cleaning of, of that room in between class periods, the materials will be there for those, those individuals that want to utilize them.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Next slide.
Can I just interject for one moment? Sorry. Uh, James, sorry to interrupt. Um, I just think it, it behooves us to consider what this picture of schooling looks like. You know, when we went into the remote period last year, um, it was kind of uncharted territory for everybody. And there was a great deal of revision, a great deal of trial and error, uh, because it was just so radically different. And I think there's a sense that, oh, if we can go back to school, we'll go back to normal. Um, this is so different from the kind of schooling that we're used to, that I just think heading into the remote potential, um, we need to be aware that this will probably be another trial and error, another extended period where we really have to be thinking and revising what, this is what creates a safe environment, what allows kids to learn in this environment. Because it is, it's just, I mean, if you look at this list, utterly different than any kind of educational environment any of us have ever been part of. So, um, I, I appreciate the level of thought and planning that's gone into this, but it's a colossal change from what we're used to. And I think it's going to be, again, a kind of natural experiment. What does this look like when we go?
Great point, Pat. Jim, next slide. Right here, surveys, uh, real quickly, surveys, Fenton has administered two family surveys these last few months. I would like to review our latest July survey regarding remote learning, hybrid learning, in-person learning and return to school. If you look at the top of the slide, the metrics are described as, as not at all concerned and very concerned. The chart on the top left describes remote learning. Approximately 53% reported that they are not concerned with remote learning. Thirty-one percent, um, uh, reported that they, I'm sorry, 53% reported they are not concerned. Let me just leave up, not concerned and 31% stated that they are concerned. The rest are in the middle. The chart on the right-hand side in regards to, uh, hybrid learning, uh, 32% reporter, reported, uh, not concerned with hybrid. Forty-two percent reported they are concerned with, uh, hybrid. The rest are in the middle. The chart in the middle describes in-person. In summary, 73% reported that they were very concerned, uh, with a in-person schedule. Next slide. Uh, just real quick, uh, just going back to the, the previous slide, there was about approximately 900 families that participated on that survey. Uh, this next slide is our July staff survey, 164, about 85% of our staff participated, with this survey. Uh, in total, we've, uh, administered, uh, three surveys so far. The, the chart on the, uh, top left describes remote learning, approximately 71% reported they are not concerned with a remote learning start. Uh, and 9% uh, reported that they are very concerned. The rest are in the middle. The chart in the right-hand side, uh, describes hybrid learning. And 16%, uh, 16% reported they are not concerned. 62 reported that they were very concerned. The rest are in the middle. The chart in the middle describes in-person. In summary, 85% reported that they were concerned with in-person learning. What are the next steps? Okay. What are the next steps in regards to, uh, our plan? Well, we're going to go on a, uh, uh, communication, uh, uh, campaign to inform our, our community and provide them guidance, uh, in regards to how we will start this year. This is, I'm talking about our students, our parents and community. We're going to continue to monitor the ever-changing COVID environment, um, locally, countywide, state, national and global. We're going to continue to work with our partners, including our regulating agencies. And we're going to continue to update our, our board weekly and, and at our, uh, August, uh, board meeting. That is our plan. Is there any questions from the board? I just want to reiterate again, thank you, um, to the board. Uh, it's been a, we started this journey March 13th. And for me personally, um, you guys have been very supportive, very trusting. And just rest assured, uh, both the, the teachers, um, and administrators are working hard to provide the best education for our students.
James, I just wanted to, uh, add, um, again, thank you to you, Yovan, Michelle, Patrick, Sam. I don't think I left anyone out on this, really.
Bruce.
Bruce, I'm sorry, Bruce. You, you fell off my picture. I, I apologize. Um, again, this is a monumental, um, undertaking. And I think I speak for all board members. We recognize that, we see that, we live it. And we just wanted to say, um, we know it can't just be a few people, you know, that, that, uh, accomplish this. You know, we saw the list of all the staff members, um, that, that, that are involved in, in the task force and in this endeavor. We recognize, uh, again, I think I speak for all board members. We recognize the hard work that they're doing and that how each member is lending their expertise, their personal talents to this. And in the end, it's for the students of Fenton High School. We, 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 uh, recognize that you're being constantly inundated with new information, new compliance regulations and so forth. And I can't imagine, um, sometimes what you're inundated with every day. And then just with the presentations that we've been, uh, given, the amount of detail that you need to think through, you know, from both at the micro and macro level, uh, we recognize it and we rec, again, we recognize the, uh, you know, the teachers that are involved. Um, and I just wanted to say, uh, thank you. I can't, you know, I'm not an educator. I, I just can't imagine the, um, you know, what was involved. And I would just like to say thank you for, uh, uh, all of your efforts and those that have been part of this all the way. And it's basically all the staff members that are going to be involved with this, uh, once school starts. So, uh, I think that was it and, um, thank you. Thank you and, uh, continue the, the good work.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, next up, we're in regards to our district, uh, 100 report. We received another quarterly smart procurement FOIA, uh, which basically they are requesting our quarterly purchasing data and vendor information. Mary Thomas had submitted their request and we are good to go with that FOIA. That is it for our district report.
Okay. All right. Thank you, James. Uh, then we move on to the, uh, consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding anything on the consent agenda? If not, then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll second.
Okay. I'm sorry, who, uh, did, did you need?
Mary Ann, Mary Ann and Jackie.
And Jackie. Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. Uh, may it, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Rago?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Okay. That motion has passed. Uh, we move on to the next discussion item. It is the August Board of Education meeting day change, change. Uh, James?
Sure. Uh, we are recommending to the board, uh, that the board meeting for the August, uh, be moved from August 19th to August 26th for a number of reasons. Number one, we are anticipating guide, more with guidance from the state IDPH and ISB regards to COVID learning, uh, and COVID and learning. Number two, we will be able to provide the board more data if the board meeting, uh, is, is moved to a later date. And also to report to the board, uh, some of the, uh, some of the issues or good news celebration of the start of the school year. And lastly, it spaces the board meeting more evenly. As you know, we, uh, pushed back this July board meeting just as we predicted that there's going to be more guidance in the last minute before school starts. And we just want to space it out. Just imagine, we, we're going to have another board meeting in three weeks. And I believe it's, uh, August 19th and we've only had seven days of school. So I think it will be, um, wise in our part again to push it the, the last week of August. That is, uh, that would be my recommendation to the board.
Anyone have any questions regarding the date change for the next meeting?
Nope, no.
Okay, then, uh, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve to change the August Board of Education meeting day from August 19th, 2020 to August 26th, 2020?
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Patty, and thank you, Mary Ann.
Juliette.
Juliette, I'm sorry.
Oh, no worries.
Okay. Roll call please.
Peyton Hall?
Yes.
Rago?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Okay, motion has passed. Now we move on to the September Board of Education meeting day change. Uh, James, please.
Back to back board changes here. Okay. Uh, due to the board retreat scheduled on September 23rd, I was informed, uh, by President Wedeman, if we could move our board meeting from September 23rd due to the board retreat to September 30th.
So the board, the board retreat is the 23rd, correct?
That's correct. So you will have two board meetings the month of September.
And what time does it start?
I, I forget the time. I'm sorry, Jackie. Paul, do you remember?
I believe, uh, I believe.
I thought it was six.
Six o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I will send an invite out, uh, Jackie.
Thank you.
Okay, at least this way we have it spaced out a week rather than having a board retreat and a meeting one day after the other. And I think I sent a message every, I, I think everyone was good with that, with having it, the board retreat on a Wednesday, yeah.
Yep.
So, and so, um,
September 23rd for the retreat? Correct.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm putting it in my calendar now. And then you said the 30th for the meeting?
Board meeting, yes.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay.
I was doing the same thing, Juliette.
All right, then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approved to change the September Board of, Board of Education meeting date from September 23rd, 2020 to September 30th, uh, 2020?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jackie. May I have a second?
Second, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Uh, Mary, roll call please.
Peyton Hall?
Yes.
Rago?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes.
Okay, that motion has passed. Um, next item is the consolidated, um, district plan. Uh, Michelle, I believe that is yours.
Yep, I was trying to find the new button. Yep, that's mine. I, um, I am going to try and get us through this, um, as quickly as possible, but it is a very robust plan. The Illinois State Board of Education requires us to now do this consolidated district plan. Um, if we go to the next slide, um, what, what it is, is a, a grant management system that brings together multiple funding sources. So it allows our state to view all of our grants holistically and it, it helps them provide a more, um, better technical support that they believe is grounded in equity. So what essentially we'll require to do with the district is answer one set of planning questions to meet the requirements of five federal formula grants in which we participate. So once we have this consolidated plan developed, we're then able to start applying for all of these individual grants. But they want to see what we're doing holistically as a school that supports each of these grants. Um, so if you go to the next slide, I outline what, which grants are involved in our consolidated plan. So this is, um, to be able to access our Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV and IDEA. Um, Title I is our improvement basic program. Title II is really about professional learning and training and recruiting high quality teachers. Title III is about language instruction educational program, particularly our English lan- language learners. Um, Title IV is to support an academic enrichment. And our IDEA, uh, be really about our special education programming. So we have to answer a, a pretty lengthy set of questions that follow points to how we will be using or, um, supporting these programs. So if you go to the next slide, I've outlined for you actually what our allotment in each area is, um, for this school year. You can see IDEA, our special education services are particularly, um, uh, uh, our highest grant through this plan or, uh, highest allotment through this grant. And then Title I follows suit and then, um, Title II, then Title III and IV. You'll see on Title IV, um, a minus, um, adding to a zero. And then you'll see it in Title II, we have 13,000 actually added in there. We actually transferred our funds available through Title IV into our Title I because Title I, um, encompasses the same, um, ideas and, um, we can use the money in the same way in Title I plus some. So Title I covers everything that we could possibly do in Title IV and then some if we want to. So we just feel like there's more flexibility in how we can use the money in Title I. It's interesting hearing me talk about money, Bruce, right? Um, so these are, in, in your packet, I have like a, a more lengthy summary of responses. I'll try and take you through the very brief overview during this presentation, but in your packet, you can see more lengthy summary of responses. These are all of the areas in which they ask us to report on in this grant. We can go to the next slide. Um, the first and, uh, the, the first in front and center question they ask us is please describe the steps that will be taken to overcome barriers to equitable program participation of students, teachers and other beneficiaries with special needs. Um, I, I pointed our response to this question from ISB to our equity audit, um, our partnership with equal opportunity schools and many of our professional development efforts in this area of equity. We go to the next slide. Um, it asks us to outline, um, ISB's goals in conjunction with our district goals. Um, what, ISB has the goal set of student learning, learning conditions and educator quality. Under each of those, we give, um, some more specific district goals. So under student learning, we aim for 90% freshmen on trap and 90% college and career ready. And our learning conditions, we aim for safe and healthy learning conditions. And under edu- educator quality, we're looking to, um, we're looking at teacher and school leaders in developing this quality. Um, they ask us to share with them our stakeholder input and how we, what our needs assessment is in developing our plan. Um, I pointed us to the strategic plan process. We took a lot of time and, um, engaged many stakeholders in the development of that three-year plan. Um, we use a variety of sources, um, within that strategic plan process. Uh, more recently, we've been, we've been working with Highlander Institute to analyze our data from parent, student, teacher feedback surveys. And we have a Title I meeting every year where parents are invited and they come and give us, I, I openly ask for input, um, come and give us, I openly ask for input. Last year, we had a parent attend who gave a great suggestion. We incorporated into the grant this year, and we were able to send some students, well, not yet because of COVID, but they were due to attend a STEM camp in Boston. So we were able to help provide some support on that based on a parent input for Title I in particular. Next. Our programs and activities to take you through just the overview of each title. Title I, we focus on equity and personalized learning. We focus on professional learning communities, digital learning platforms, social emotional learning and career readiness efforts. So most of our funds are pointed in those direction, in that direction. Title II, professional development to support all areas of our strategic plan. Title III, we support students with limited or interrupted formal education and all levels of EL in the general setting. And then our IDEA grant is typically used most heavily for NEDSEC tuition and staff development. Another area of their focus is transition from middle grades to post-secondary education. Sorry for that misspelling there. Summer Matters, we do a robust summer program for that transition. We articulate with C O D, particularly in math and English, but in other areas as well. Advanced placement and dual credit courses. We have a college and career resource center, and we do a great deal of curriculum and instruction articulation with our feeder districts at two and seven. They ask us about our parent and family engagement, which I think we're really proud of. Our bilingual parent outreach program, our BPOP, and we have our typical outreach with open house. We have multiple freshman parent nights, not just one. We have parent-teacher conferences. And we're developing a parent academy within these grant programs this year in conjunction with Highlander Institute to support our parents with the home learning environment during remote and hybrid learning. And we have a digital literacy skills. Every student gets a Chromebook, and we are, seems like we're purchasing a new one every day, but digital learning and assessment platforms. We are adding quite a few more than we usually have in this plan and in these grants. And I think there's only two more slides. They ask us to outline students needing assistance to meet standards. We've had in place for a while now Bison Orange. We have our special education services, our English as second language services, and our Summer Matters program. And of course, our Bison Time programming that allows for us to intervene with students. College and career readiness, they ask us to outline that area, and I pointed them towards our resource center. Our college and counseling programming is outstanding. Our counselors are great with college counseling. Career pathways development, we've been talking about that now here at this, in this space with all of you, and working pretty hard on it throughout the school year. We have some robust CTE programming, career and technical education programming, and our partnership with TCD is very strong. Finally, they want to know what we're doing to support a safe and healthy learning environment. I think this is where we see our social emotional learning highlighted the most. We've been diving into restorative practices within our discipline systems and trauma-informed practices throughout our building and classrooms. So that's, that's the brief of the very long consolidated plan. Once this plan is approved, which I hope you will approve tonight, we will begin to leverage our applications for each of the individual grants, and often use the funds to provide our better experiences for our students.
You know, I think you can expound on the safe and healthy learning, because we do more than that. I mean, just the security that we've, you know, established in the building, and, you know, having contact with adults, and making sure every student has a contact with an adult. And, I mean, there's more to it than just our, you know.
Yeah, thanks Patty. I agree. And I think within our, the more, the expanded summary within your packets, you might see more than just these highlighted. I tried to give you as brief as possible, but I agree. And some of the more, some of the more recent features too, during COVID, I'm not sure, you know, as we were writing this grant, things were developing too. So, or not this grant, this plan. So I tried to capture as much as I could, but I completely agree with you.
So what's in our packet then? That's what you're submitting to the state?
Yeah, that's, that's actually a summary of what I'm submitting to the state. It's even, it's even more robust than that.
So, just to clarify then, then the grants that you have in the past that you have applied for, you've done it on your own, but now it's going through into a pool?
Yeah. Another layer, when we used to apply for the grants, they would have, like, Title I would have many of these questions. Then Title II would ask them again. Then Title III would ask them again. So I think they took the questions that most readily get asked across those grants to be answered in one overarching plan. There's still other, within those applications, there's still very specific items within each of those applications. So you still have to do a robust application process for each of those grants as well. So they just added another layer of really, you know, documentation to understand that what we're doing holistically as a building. They want to know that those grants tie together, and that we have really strategic goals in what we're trying to achieve. So really, I point us to, when I was, when I'm writing this plan, I point us to the strategic plan. And I work off that strategic plan pretty directly, and then I expound on it with the details that they require.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Paul, you're on mute, Paul.
All right, thank you, Michelle. Thank you for that presentation. Anyone else have any questions regarding that? Okay. Then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the Illinois State Board of Education Fiscal Year 2021 Consolidated District Plan, Fenton Community High School District 100, as presented?
I'll make the motion, Paul.
Thank you, Mary Ann. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Juliette. Mary, roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Ramirez? Ramirez?
Sorry, sorry, Mary. I was still muted. Yes.
Thank you. Jallowick?
Yes.
Rago?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. All right, motion has passed. Next, we move on to the 2020, 2021 tentative budget. Bruce, is that time of year again?
It certainly is, Mr. Wedeman, yes. So here we are, July, to talk about the tentative budget tonight. And I guess I just wanted to start out kind of reading the opening line, or just about the opening line in my memo to the board for the development of this budget. And I state that this year's budget is like no other, and is based on assumptions and some uncertainties due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And I think as we have heard throughout the evening here, from James to Patrick to Yovan to Michelle to Sam, what we're kind of contending with in this unprecedented time, and the budget's going to reflect those things too as we get into this. But I wanted to start out by just talking a little bit about the legal adoption process, and kind of the structure or mechanics of the budget and how it's laid out, and then we'll get more specific into our tentative budget as it is. So the legal requirements, and I think you're familiar with this, but for everyone's benefit, it is prepared in tentative form, and that's what we're presenting tonight to you. We make it available to the public 30 days prior to adoption, and we publish it in the newspaper as well. The public hearing is published in advance, and we'll put that in the paper. It's adopted by September 30th by the board. That's when final action, it has to be filed by then, or no later than September 30th. And then after that, we do submit it to the State Board of Education, and the county clerk, and the regional office. So factors that impact the budget, some of these seem obvious, but I'll go ahead through them. Fund balance, we talk a lot about that. I know the board's very familiar with that concept. The property tax levy or real estate taxes, projected enrollments play a big role, staffing and benefits, of course, collective bargaining agreements. And we do have two, three agreements that are, work classifications that are under CBAs, capital projects, infrastructure, long-term revenue and expenditure projections, and our deficit spending budget reduction plans. The district maintains eight funds. The bolded funds, education fund, the operations and maintenance, transportation, municipal retirement, and working cash, those are what we refer to as our operational funds. So those are really the funds that are, we operate the district with. So any educational costs associated with our teaching staff, or supplies, or administration, all comes out of there. Our operations and maintenance, of course, would be our building grounds, maintenance, folks, transportation is just that, our busing needs for our students, municipal retirement or retirement program for our non-certified staff, and Medicare costs for all of our staff, and then our working cash fund. The other funds, the debt service, capital projects, fire prevention and safety, those are what are considered special purpose funds that are really only for that specific purpose. So debt service, for example, would be where the district accounts for all of its debt, to pay for any outstanding debt that we have. So, and then here again is the five operating funds that we have in the district. Those are all subject to the tax cap. I think everyone's kind of familiar with that. And that's limited by the CPI or the 5%, whichever is less by law. So that is limited, those funds. So our levy is under those requirements. As we move into our sources of revenue, our local sources, our property taxes, CPPRT is our personal property replacement taxes. Those are monies that come through the state, but they're considered local funds. Student and other fees that we collect, interest on investments, and that's the bulk of our funding, is really local sources. And property taxes would be at the top of the list there. Our state funding is our evidence-based funding, formerly general state aid, but now it's referred to as evidence-based funding. Our mandated categorical grants, primarily our transportation funds. We do get some special payments as well, but our transportation aid comes through that source. And then as Michelle so graciously talked about, our Title I, II, III, and IDEA grants, our consolidated grant program, that is the bulk of our federal sources, our national school launch program. We participated in that, as you know. And then the CARES Act, that is a new source, federal source, signed into law by President Trump. And I had to write this down because it's a mouthful, but it stands for the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. So you can now understand why they abbreviate that to the CARES Act. And that's purposes to fund and prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus threat. So we've talked a lot about that. Sam outlined a number of initiatives and priorities, and much of that will be funded either partially or fully with funds from the CARES Act. And that's about $186,000. As we move into the expenditure types that are included in the budget, and we follow the Illinois Program Accounting Manual, so this is all structured by state accounting standards. So if you're wondering why it's put together in this manner, that's why. The instructional programs are in a major area, probably our biggest area, which would include our core content teachers and associated costs. Our support services and administration, support services would include our guidance staff, our social work, psychology folks, instructional improvements. On our building administration, and district administration will be included under administration, operations and maintenance, as you can surmise, would be custodial maintenance of grounds, folks, and the associated building costs there. Technology that, you know, includes all of our Wi-Fi, our Chromebooks, our servers, our infrastructure, anything related to technology. Transportation, of course, would be our busing needs, capital projects, infrastructure needs, and our debt service. And then our categories of expenses, they refer to them as expenditure objects, but it's classifications of expenditures. Our salaries, employee benefits, purchase services, supplies and materials, capital outlay, dues, fees, and other miscellaneous expenses, and tuition fees and costs. This slide, you know, we try to capture the main budget initiatives or priorities here, and these are going to kind of revert back to what you've heard a little bit earlier this evening. The curriculum development, we talked about remote learning 2.0. CARES Act is funding a lot of this summer work. There's, it's been a pretty robust summer with staff developing this curriculum. And fortunately, we've had some funding to offset some of those costs. Our strategic plan continuation, you know, the board passed out a couple of years ago, that continues to be worked through, developed, and improved upon. Our technology enhancements, Mr. Batson's got some initiatives happening there, expanding our Wi-Fi coverage, and I'm pleased to say that some of that, if not a good chunk of that, will be offset with E-rate funds, federal funds. And then we get into the protocols here that we talked a little about earlier, adherence to regulating, agency safety and cleaning protocols, facility safety and security, custodial cleaning needs, transportation safety, food services. All those things are typically would be in our budget or always in our budget, but I think there's even a heightened redirection of funds in those concentrated areas to support initiatives and ensure that we have a safe learning environment for our students and our staff and visitors, quite honestly. So that's our priorities for this year. The key budget drivers that go into the budget with respect to the revenues, the property taxes, are projected to increase by 1%. Part of that, that seems low, our levy is, we're allowed to levy by 2.2%. Because of, we're not entirely sure, we had our tax distribution happened in the spring, that comes in May, June, it comes in two distributions, May, June, and then in the fall. So we're expecting the second half of our distribution in August, September. We were fortunate enough where we relatively received just about everything we had budgeted for and expected in the spring, so we're pleased about that. We weren't sure what was going to happen with, you know, the economy and people's jobs in jeopardy and things like that. So we're cautiously optimistic that we will get our payments, our taxes in full in the fall, which would be, you know, in August, September. As I said, the bulk of it will come then. However, we have reduced our collection factor as a precautionary measure, just based on what's happening out there in the economy. So we've reduced that. And the other piece of it that has impacted the tax amounts, we haven't factored in any new growth. So we typically factor in 100% collection rate. We reduced that by 1%. And we also didn't factor in any new property growth. So those two things kind of are making that property tax adjustment smaller than what we will see. But we're hoping it'll be greater than that. Local revenues are down, projected to go down by 15 and 1/2% overall due to the corporate personal property replacement taxes that I just mentioned a little bit earlier ago. due to uh the corporate personal property replacement taxes that I just mentioned a little bit earlier ago. Um, and our investments, um, and our and our fees that we charge. Um, our interest income investments are projected to go down sixty-eight percent, that's significant. Um, we received about four hundred and um where is it here? Four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars last year, so we, we uh, actually, we exceeded the budget. So that's a great way to uh i- item to exceed the budget in. Um, this year, we're, we're under a hundred and forty thousand dollars projected. And and that's with feedback and input from PMA, our financial advisors. So the market is just not doing well in terms of uh rates of return there. And our uh personal property replacement taxes, funds that flow through the state. Um, they're a little bit in a financial crisis, um, we, we've reduced that by twenty percent. Um, and that's goes from about one point four million to one point one million. So a pretty good uh chunk there of our local revenues um that were projected to drop in. And a company, combined all those are about a fifteen and a half percent drop. Uh, evidence-based funding. Again, the general state aid, we're, we're holding that flat. Um, we're um in that uh tier four, which is, you know, considered a, you know, a wealthy district that that uh does not uh, is not entitled, I guess, maybe that's not the right word to use, but to get um um any more uh funds and and basically what we're, what we're having uh receiving now. Other state aid, we've, we've held that flat as well. Um, we'll make a final adjustment to that before we present the final budget. Uh, the federal sources, as I, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, the CARES Act, um, that uh will, that'll be our new source of revenue, about a hundred and eighty-six thousand, as I said. And then the other federal aid that Michelle talked about earlier, the Title One and uh Two, Three and Four Grants and as well as the idea will be held relatively flat. So overall, uh, our operating revenue is projected to remain uh flat and and uh very little uh growth there. Um, and then we'll move on to the expenditures. Um, salary and benefits are projected to increase five and a half percent. Um, our our uh salaries, the majority of the folks, um, our staff are under a collective bargain agreement. Board-approved increases, um, those types of things. Uh, we have kept level, uh, our levels of staffing relatively unchanged or reduced uh slightly. Um, so we're watching that very cautiously. I know Dr. Benson's been keeping a very close eye on on all of our staffing needs and and what we think we'll need. Um, purchase services are up twenty percent. I know that seems substantial. I'll, I'll explain that a little bit further on the next slide or so. Um, but that does include our our technology costs, subscription services. Um, our transportation, uh contracted con- uh transportation services for our, our special education students. Um, professional development, all those kinds of things go under purchase services. Uh, supplies and materials, um, we're projecting an eight point two percent increase. That would, of course, would include classroom materials, um, building supplies, um, and materials. Custodial supplies, office needs, all those types of things that fall into that category. A tuition increase of one point four percent. Um, those are for uh outside placements that for students that attend uh um attendance centers outside of of fence and that that uh aren't accommodated here but elsewhere. So we have to pay tuition to attend those um placements. Overall, operating fund expenditures, expenditures are projected to increase by six point eight percent. However, when we compare that budget to budget, um, it's a two point three percent increase. Um, so that, that's uh, I know seems substantial, but um as I said, I'll, I'll explain that a little bit further as we, as we move uh through this process. Um, just if we want to look at the budget as a whole and and a summary or a budget at a glance. Um, I think you're familiar with this um chart. And I know it's got a lot of information on it, but we're, we're categorizing the funds on the left there by operating and non-operating funds. So the five funds there at the top are the operating funds, as we talked about a little bit earlier. Um, we're showing the beginning fund balance, um, the revenues to collected to take in, expected to take in the expenditures. And then the variance. So as you can see, uh, we are projecting um a shortfall in um three of the five funds that we uh operate in, the operating funds. Uh, with an overall subtotal shortfall in operating funds of eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And then we kind of moved down the line there are uh non-operating funds, the debt service, capital projects. Um, about a hundred and four thousand and then a total of shortfall of about nine hundred and seventeen thousand. So the next slide, this is kind of what I was referring to earlier. Um, this shows the tentative budget on the top line there above the yellow. So we've got the salaries, benefits, all those specific uh object areas or classifications are listed there. Uh, with the total all the way to the right. The next yellow line below it is the increase projected from the budget activity from nineteen twenty. So salaries are showing four point seven, you know, benefits nine point one, purchase services twenty percent. Um, so if you recall, uh, obviously, the year ended abruptly last year to no one's fault, um, but uh, and we know why. Um, so our non-labor expenses, really, we, we were significantly under budget in 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 some of our areas here. For example, uh, purchase services. Um, our spending basically ended, uh, the uh, the major spending of it ended in in March. Um, so we had a couple of months there where spending was down, you know, significantly. Um, and we, we, we came in well under budget. Uh, overall, we came in at uh ninety-four percent of our expenditures. So that's about one point seven million dollars under budget. So uh, we did well, um, the ending school year helped. Uh, we did not a great way to, you know, uh, build a reserve, but I suppose it 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 worked out uh okay rather than the other way around. Um, our salary and benefits came in pretty much as projected because we continued to pay our staff as as we were legally required to do. But the other areas, purchase services, supplies, equipment, we, we did uh came in under budget uh for the most part, uh, if not all of those areas. So if you compared that um to what the budget was. Um, our salaries um from, for example, the nineteen twenty budget to the twenty twenty-one budget. Um, we're showing a two point seven percent increase, so that's what it amounts to. So overall, if you take that line all the way over the bottom line there in the total. Uh, if you compared budget to budget, the increase would would be about a two point three percent. Um, it's, it's a bigger increase because our expenses were were so much under, almost artificially really, under budget. And that's why there's a, there's a greater increase when you compare the activity to the budget for next year of that six point eight percent. So uh, I hope I explained that where it made some sense to to all of you. Um, so here's our kind of a, a, our historical perspective and and what we're projecting, uh, at least out to to next year anyhow. Um, so the good news is from uh, one, two, three, the fourth uh uh paragraph over from the uh right side, fiscal year um eighteen, fifth year, fifth, fifth uh category line. Um, fiscal year, June twenty eighteen. Um, revenues, the blue line are the revenues, expenditures are the red. If you look to the further to the right, um, or to the right, all those years going forward. Um, up until this year, uh, the year that we just finished, I should say nineteen twenty. Um, we're, we're exceeding expenditures. So that's wonderful when that happens. Um, the board has been tremendously influential and and allowing us to have that happen. Um, so we are showing uh, and I, and I will point out for the budget of June twenty and the pre-audited of June twenty. Uh, we actually um came out a little bit ahead. Our expenditures, you can see are are less than than budget. So um, that, that's, that's, that's good for us. Um, next year, um, uh, we are looking at that, at that shortfall, as I showed on a couple of previous slides of that um nine hundred thousand dollars. So that's uh, that's the imbalance there uh in the tentative budget. We're going to try to do our best to minimize that as much as we can, but uh, under the circumstances, right now, what we're planning, that, that's what it looks like. And then just, just a pie chart to kind of show you the operating fund revenues and how they're allocated amongst the various funds. Uh, probably to no surprise, the educational fund is the biggest chunk of that, that eighty-six percent. Followed by operations, transportation, IMRF and and working cash. And then on the expenditure side with operating funds. Um, same thing what you would expect, the Ed Fund, biggest chunk there of eighty-four percent of all expenditures are are attributed to the Ed Fund. Followed by the operations and maintenance, transportation and so on uh down the line there. The educational fund, I kind of pulled this fund out just because it is the largest fund, eighty percent, as we just saw there. Uh, and the funding sources would support that fund, local, overwhelmingly local, eighty-eight percent. The state is seven percent and the federal funding at five percent. And the expense side, um, between the two, um, salary and benefits, that represents about eighty percent of the costs in the Ed Fund. That's typical for a school district. Um, we are, uh, you know, heavily, um, you know, labor-intensive business, if you will. You know, we serve kids and and then that's just the nature of the, of the business. So that's consistent with with our uh districts throughout the state and across the country. Um, so eighty percent of that is salary and benefits, followed by um our, our tuition would be the next highest category. Uh, purchase services, supplies, uh, equipment and non-capitalized equipment would would be the last uh item there. But that's the breakout of the funds and the Ed Fund. Operations and Maintenance Fund, um, sorry, this turned out a little bit blurry for some reason, but the uh, for the most part, uh, in a, in a, in a, in a, um, historically, the funding has all been local. This year, we talked about the CARES Act, so we have put some CARES Act funds um in the operations and maintenance fund to pay for some of those things that uh Dr. Benson mentioned earlier. Some of the uh cleaning chemicals and and equipment and whatnot. So that's, that's why there's a federal source there and that is from the CARES Act. Um, and then the operations and maintenance, this would be our second largest fund. I won't go through every fund, but just wanted to give you the top two funds and what it looks like. Again, salary and benefits, um, not quite uh the way the Ed Fund is, just because it's, there's more operational needs required in this fund. But the salary and benefits represent about fifty-six percent. Um, and then followed by purchase services, uh, supplies and equipment is is how that kind of breaks out um within this fund. And then our fund balance, historically, you've seen this in the past. Um, you know, from twenty ten to twenty nineteen are all audited nu- audited numbers. Um, twenty twenty, um, the uh third, uh, the first, I should say, yellow uh bar uh from the right, that eight point nine at the top are eight point nine months of of uh months of uh reserves that are shown there. Um, that's what was budgeted, uh, that twenty-three million, six eighty-three number, eight point nine months. We actually came out a little bit ahead, as we talked about, uh, we're at nine point eight months. Um, and then we're projecting next year, uh, as it stands right now in the tentative budget, at eight point eight months. So a, so a dip there, um, but we're, we're still above some of those years that that happened previous uh to this, this uh year. Um, so the next steps, uh, we would ask the board is to approve the tentative budget and place on public display. Uh, we will continue to refine the FY twenty-one budget. We will continue to monitor state uh local and federal decisions. Um, we will uh present the September thirtieth budget um and have a, ask for a hearing that evening as well. Um, in in September. Um, so I guess in summary, I would say that um, even though we have a shortfall this year. You, you know, we've been, I think, very cautious in our spending. Uh, we have had three or four years um of uh surplus budgets, so we've built up our fund balance uh a little bit. Uh, which is a good thing and and it um, that, that's uh critical, of course, when it comes into play uh in situations like what we're living right now with this pandemic. Um, I think we're in a lot better shape than than some districts that that really have no reserves. Uh, we're fortunate enough, as I said, to have that. Um, so I'm not terribly um concerned uh next year, but we certainly wouldn't want to continue to operate with the deficit going forward. Did somebody have a question? Sorry. Uh, okay. Um, so I think that controlled growth, the past budget surpluses has helped us, uh, put us in a more stable position. Um, and I think the other thing is, you know, our revenues are really con- truly constrained, as you, as we've talked about earlier. You know, we're talking about pretty much flat revenue growth. Um, the expenses are going up, um, you know, uh, as you would expect with with the salaries and whatnot. Um, we've redirected some of, our deficit could have been much worse if we kind of left spending as 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 the norm and continued growing. We, we, we never do that, but I'm just kind of using that as a, I guess, a, an example. But we've been more uh redirected, I think, some of our funds, some of our expenses into into other areas, such as safety uh and security cleanliness. Yes, the CARES Act will help fund some of that, um, and let's pay for some of our uh uh robust learning with our teaching staff. But not all of it. So we have to support that with our local funds as well. Um, so we've deferred some expenses to to help that uh and uh puts, take some pressure off the bu- uh budget. Such as delaying some equipment purchases, delaying buses, uh, uh, you know, building improvements, uh, putting on hold. Um, and and really, the emphasis in the budget is keeping the building safe and clean for staff and students. Um, we don't believe we're putting ourselves in any kind of a compromising position by delaying and deferring some of these projects. Um, and we just think it's, it's prudent and and the best way to to move forward. Um, and and keep the budget under control and um still continue to provide a, you know, a robust education for our students. Um, and and a safe environment for our staff to come into every day and our, our students to come into. So with that, I'll uh gladly open it up to any questions, comments, uh, concerns that you may have. Is everyone still awake? All right, good.
Hey Bruce, you for, for, for the board as well and and myself. Um, you talk about the operating fund projected to increase by six point eight percent. Just want to make sure that's clear.
You were kind of breaking up a little bit. James, could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Sure. It's uh, it's the six point eight percent in regards to the operating fund. And the budget to budget comparison, you went over earlier. Um, one with approximately two percent and the other one, six point eight percent.
Right. Sure. Um, I, I think that really what drove that is coming so much under budget by one point seven million dollars in nineteen uh twenty fiscal year. So that created a bigger spread, if you will, or bigger gap. Um, from the, the nineteen twenty to the development of the, of the twenty twenty, twenty-one budget year. So um, it, it was uh less than what we would have normally expected and and that's why it created a bigger gap. And of course, we know why the year ended the way it did and 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 the costs. Uh, you know, some cost state remained similar, uh, the same or what we would have expected, as I said, salary and benefits. But other costs uh just didn't materialize because of of the way uh the year ending uh early uh as it did. So that's what created that larger gap. So great, great point of clarification, James.
And that's a positive.
Uh, I think it is, yeah. I mean, we, we think, I don't want the, the, you know, the board looks, wow, six point eight percent. That just seems kind of outrageous. What are you, what are you doing to control things? Um, and and we are doing a lot and and will continue to do more and and certainly listen to to our stakeholders. Um, but if you, again, um, uh, we do, do make our comparisons to our activities of what we projected uh and what we have experienced. Our costs um have have been or are compared to for the previous year. Um, and that's where that six point eight percent comes into play. But we just wanted to kind of put that in perspective because this is such a unique circumstance and 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 time of what's happening. So to to keep that in perspective and give the board hopefully a, a, a full uh view of of what that is.
Thank you, Bruce. I am a little surprised at the increase, but you did a good job. I was expecting it to, for uh, for it to go down during this time, I guess, because the students aren't in the building. Um, but you explained it pretty well, so I appreciate that.
Thank, thank you, Juliette.
Uh, Bruce, just a quick question, the, the CARES Act money, the hundred eighty-six thousand. Now those, is, is that amount what is available to the district that can be drawn from? Or is that actual um funds that are, that were received, that that were received by the district?
Yeah, no, good question, Paul. It's a reimbursement, so that's what we have available to draw on. So we'll submit some expenditure reports, similar to Michelle's. Yeah, no, good question, Paul. It's a reimbursement, so that's what we have available to draw on, so we'll submit some expenditure reports, similar to Michelle's grants. We submit quarterly expenditure reports, so it's a reimbursement process is how it works. So, you know, we, we, we put out the money upfront and then we ask for reimbursement and provide the receipts and the reports to, to make that happen.
Okay. All right, so we just can't exceed that amount, basically, right?
Uh, no, no, they, they will not give us more than what we have available to us. We'll keep trying, but they keep saying no, Paul, so not.
All right, thanks, thanks, Bruce.
Sure, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for Bruce regarding the budget? Then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one tentative budget as presented and place it on public display in the district office. It's further recommended that the board schedule a public hearing at seven P M. during the regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, September thirtieth, twenty-twenty, prior to adoption of the final budget.
Still moved?
Uh, thank you, Patty, and thank you, Jackie. Mary, Mary, roll call, please.
Peyton Hall?
Yes.
Jalawick?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Bruce. That motion has passed. Now we move on to the Board Resolution for Equity and Diversity. James?
Sure. Thanks, Paul. This is a continuation, is a conversation that we're going to continue. Rose from the June Board Meeting in relation to the Board's Resolution for Equity and Diversity. What took place in June was a, a task for the Board to submit their, their comments or draft regarding equity and diversity. We have received five documents that we have posted and created slides. And I think President Wedeman will take the facilitator role to go over the different documents and to start the discussion.
Okay. All right, the, do we have those on, on screen? The, the, the different drafts? Okay. This is the first one. These, these are the drafts that were received by the Board members. Let me just quickly go through them. And again, these are just drafts, you know, we can draw from them or just take them as a whole and maybe we want to approve one of these drafts the way, the way it's written. Or if there's parts of these that we like or sentences and so forth, you know, and, and we can then include it in, in our final resolution. So, you know, these don't have to be the final, but these are what was presented. So let me go through the first one here. Is, okay, whereas the Fenton District One Hundred Board of Education is committed to maintaining equity for all students, staff and visitors, as we continue to strive to cultivate successful, passionate learners through rigor, relevance and relationships. Whereas we embrace diversity as a key attribute to in Fenton District, Fenton District One Hundred's belief statements, Bison Way and Portrait of a Graduate. And whereas we provide a safe, secure and caring environment, where all stakeholders and visitors are treated with respect by fostering an inclusive educational environment, where each student and staff member is afforded a respectful and supportive, supportive learning environment. Whereas Fenton students embrace diversity by believing that it is in unity that we, that we empower as a learning community, respecting diverse backgrounds, advocating for oneself and others by being a voice for social justice, establishing a sense of belonging by accepting oneself and others. Collaborate, collaborating with others, creating a sense of harmony within our interconnected world. And whereas Fenton District One Hundred encourages innovative teaching and engagement through ongoing educational opportunities for our staff, thus allowing for adaptation of the curriculum, professional development programs, services, policies and procedures to ensure an equitable, equitable learning environment as part of its ongoing equity and unity work. And whereas Fenton strives to empower, strengthen and unity and unify its diverse community through, throughout E, throughout reach to the community to improve communication and encourage effective collaboration of school and home environments. Whereas we infuse the skills of social emotional learning into all, I'm sorry, into all aspects of academics and Fenton culture to improve communication skills and self-awareness, thus helping to build individuals who are empowered to fulfill their civic responsibilities as contributing members of the community and our society. So that's the first one. Lot of good. I, I think it brings up a lot of good points, the wording is, I thought is engaging. It, it brings a lot of the ideas together and is very, I thought, upbeat, but you know, that's just my personal idea on that one. But if we could have the second one. All right, this one. All right, let me just read it through really quick. Whereas the Fenton District One Hundred Board of Education is committed to maintaining a safe learning environment, where each student and staff member is respected and valued for who they are, no matter their color, race, nationality, religion, sex, sexual orientation, ancestry, age, physical, physical or mental disability, gender, identity, status of being homeless or immigration status. And whereas Fenton District One Hundred has adapted its curriculum, professional development program, services, policies and procedures to ensure an equitable learning environment as part of its ongoing equity work. And whereas embraces diversity is a key attribute in Fenton, Fenton District One Hundred's belief statement, Bison Way and Portrait of a Graduate. And whereas Fenton students embrace diversity by believing that diversity empowers our learning community, respecting diverse background, advocating for oneself and others by being a voice for social justice, establishing a sense of belonging by accepting oneself and others, collaborate, collaborating with others, creating a sense of harmony within our interconnected world. And whereas Fenton educators embrace diversity by challenging biases, valuing the experiences, experiences and different differences of each individual and fostering an environment that promotes cultural competency, I'm sorry, competencies. And whereas the Fenton District One Hundred Board of Education commits to continue monitor, monitoring and adapting anti-discrimination policies and proceed, procedures to ensure that each student and staff member is afforded a respectful and supportive learning environment. And whereas the Board of Education will further its commitment to anti-racist leadership and fostering inclusive educational environments where each student, staff member feels a sense of belonging and is treated with dignity and respect. Therefore, be resolved that Fenton District One Hundred Board of Education denounces any form of racism, bigotry, disrespect or insensitivity to any member of the community. All right, that's another well-worded one. Would everyone still prefer that I read through these? Or would you rather just read through to yourself as, that we could look through these together?
Paul, I believe we've all read through them already. I feel bad that you have to read them for us.
Okay, I mean, I, I don't mind. I just, you know.
Your call.
Would it be just easier if we each, you know, if we all read it through right now together, I mean, rather than me reading through it? Or you don't care? I can read through it.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. All right, then the next one is whereas the Fenton District One Hundred Board of Education is committed to maintaining a safe and inclusive culture for learning, where each stakeholder, our students, faculty, staff, administrators, parents and community are respected and valued for their uniqueness or similarities, regardless of color, nationality, ethnicity, heritage, belief system, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, disability, economic and or citizenship status. And whereas Fenton District One Hundred has adapted its curriculum, professional development program, services, policies and procedures to support and align with equitable and inclusive learning. And whereas embraces diversity as a strategic guide in Fenton District One Hundred's belief statement, Bison Way and Portrait of a Graduate. And whereas Fenton students embrace diversity unified by one belief, it strengthens and beautifies our learning community, advocating for the natural, natural rights of oneself and others in action and by voice through connectedness and stewardship. And whereas Fenton educators embrace diversity and uphold equity by challenging personal and community biases, practice inclusive learning by valuing the experiences and uniqueness of each stakeholder. And whereas the Fenton District One Hundred Board of Education commits to governance through precedence, policy and leadership, monitoring and adopting anti-discrimination policies and procedures aligned with diversity, equity and inclusion. And whereas the Board of Education advances its commitment to D E I through equitable leadership and inclusive education, where each stakeholder feels empowered by their unique talent, voice and contribution with an equal opportunity to learn through personal responsibility and accountability to act and live through Fenton values. And therefore be resolved, the Fenton District One Hundred Board of Education stands for unity, balance and harmony by embracing diversity, equity and inclusion for the Fenton learning community. Okay, and next one, the Fenton, okay, this is now the next one. The Fenton Board is committed to an equitable school environment for each student by embracing diversity as a unifying strength for all, regardless of a student's race, nationality, sex, ancestry, age, mental disability, sexual orientation, being homeless or immigration status. Fenton High School Board of Education reaffirms its commitment to the core principles of the adopted belief statements, Bison Way, Portrait of a Graduate and policies advocating respect for each student and staff member. Fenton High School has adopted its curriculum, professional development, program, services, policies and procedures to ensure these core principles result in an equitable learning environment. Through these practices, policies and beliefs, Fenton High School fosters an inclusive, safe environment, where each student and staff member is treated with dignity and respect, embraced by a sense of belonging. Okay. And the next one. District One Hundred Board of Education is committed to maintaining a safe learning and working environment where, where every student and staff member is respected and valued regardless of their color, race, nationality, religion, sexual, sexual orientation, sexual preference, gender, identity, ancestry, age, physical or mental disability, economic status or immigration status. I believe that was all of them. So let's open it up. Is, are there any? You know, there, I think there were two or three that were, had the same, that had the same style, was laid out the same way, were a couple that were shorter. But I did enough talking now. Is there any of these that anyone likes or things should be ruled out?
So the last one, that was mine. That was just the first part of it that I felt, I read everybody's, they all sounded kind of similar to me and I felt like we were going to sort of maybe work this some things together, so did it make sense for me to try to like, put, take out a word or add a word or whatever. So I just changed the one paragraph that I felt needed to have some, some important words added to it. So that wasn't my whole statement, it was just the part that I felt needed to have a few additions.
Okay, so you felt that that was an important part that should be in on whatever resolution we come up with, should be that part?
Yeah, among other things, but I just, I felt like it was redundant to rewrite everything just for us to go through and add a word or take out a word or whatever, if that's what we're doing. I guess I was confused as to what it is exactly, because they all look very similar with similar wording. So I'm trying to figure out what it is that we're, what we're doing. I mean, wordsmith, are we getting together a committee to go through this and then put together something final or are we going to try to do this tonight? Or I'm not exactly sure how we're, how we're going to come to a resolution on this, resolution.
Okay, if, if there is a consensus on one of these that we all feel strongly that we're all behind, I think we can go ahead and vote or move on one of these tonight. If not, what you alluded to is exactly what I was thinking. We could have two board members go through these and if tonight, if everyone could just point out what they think is important, maybe there's a couple of sections that are important that everybody agrees is very important. And then those board members can move forward with that and put up a final draft that we could vote on, on the next meeting. I, that would probably be the better way to go. So, so is, is there any one part that anyone thinks that is, I mean, I, I think, I think we're all agreeing on the, on the first first part of a lot of these where we, where there's a statement of maintaining a safe learning environment and that there should not be any, that where that all students and staff members need to be respected regardless of their color, race, religion and so forth.
Can, can I ask a question?
With it, no, I'm sorry, go on, Patty.
Okay, so I, I guess I think we need to back up and just kind of ask what, what's the purpose of the resolution? Why, why are we doing this when we have so many things in place already that are very positive and uplifting for our students? That our focus is already a very positive one?
Right.
What is, what is the purpose?
The purpose is because is, this has arisen with other school districts, they are coming out with similar resolutions because of the recent social movements or upheaval and, and so forth that, that's out there right now. And the purpose of this is just to reaffirm the, the diversity and equity policies and procedures and statement that we already have in place. We're just reaffirming it. We're not taking anything away. We're not adding. We are, we just want to reaffirm in one resolution, in one statement that we have, that we believe in the, that we believe in these statements and that we have these. policies and procedures in place. That's the bottom line of why of why we are putting this resolution together.
So, what we're trying to accomplish then is to consolidate what we have?
In, in essence, yeah, because in all of these we state, you know, the Bison Way, the policies and procedures, Portrait of a Graduate statements, and we're consolidating all that in this resolution. We're, we're naming them. So we're, so. Yeah, without, yes. For a simple answer, yes.
So I think what's, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just thinking that, then what would be really important in a resolution like this is to really focus on focus on what unites us and not what divides us. I mean, that focusing on race, I think it divides us versus just focusing on, you know, the acceptance of every individual regardless. You know, like what?
Regardless of what?
Regardless, Martin Luther, what? Martin Luther, not Martin Luther King, oh my gosh. Help me out here, you guys.
I have no idea where you're going.
His speech, and I have a dream speech, was that he Martin Luther King, okay, thank you. It just wasn't sounding right. Was focusing on the character of the individual and not the color of the skin. So I think like focusing on the race is, is like we're focusing on something that divides us instead of just accepting individual.
But.
Period.
But I think what you're trying to state in this is that the color of your skin is, is you're gonna be treated equally no matter who you are. Not, it's not just the color of your skin, it's who you are. If you have a disability, if you are black, if you're white, if you're an immigrant, if you are homeless. We are stating that everyone is going to be treated the same. And we are stating exactly who these people are. That's all, you're clarifying who that is.
The more you, you start listing out all these people, it's like, well, well, what about me? You know, what, you know, what about, what about the tall people? What about the short people? What about the fat people who feel very ousted often? You know, I mean, I just, I don't know that we have to list all of them. I think because, because that list could get like really long and, and.
And what if you forget someone?
Exactly. Then they're not included? So that's, I just think that, get, it just, it's like, where do we draw the line? You know, where do we stop the inclusion, you know, because the more you include, the more you start to exclude. So I don't know that we have to get really lengthy in that first paragraph.
I disagree, but I, I guess that would be something that we would have to take a vote on as a, as a group. I feel like people need to feel included if you're marginalized part of the community, or you feel as though you are. You need to know that you are being heard.
I honestly think this is going to take more time tonight than we actually have. I, my suggestion would be to take all of these ideas, all of these five versions, get a couple of people together and go through all of them, come up with one draft that they felt the group would agree with, and propose it and see what happens.
I, I, I think that's a couple of things. So, what I'm hearing Patty is saying is that basically, once you start naming all, all the groups or identities, it's like, where do you stop? So, and, and I see that Juliet disagrees with that, that that what I'm hearing Juliet is, is we should name them out. But, I mean, I, I see Patty's point is, is where do you stop? And maybe.
That list has just gotten longer and longer.
Well, it did get longer, yes, yes, you are right. And if, you know, if by making the statement that, you know, something to the effect that if it's all student, all staff, or any visitors and so forth that are in the district are shouldn't be included in this safe, equitable learning environment, or something to that effect. I think that's what I'm hearing Patty, correct?
Yeah, I mean, everybody, everybody walks through the door. That's, that you treat everyone equally. You just, that's that, that is, that is the Fenton way.
Right, and it's it's saying the same thing, but in two different ways, basically, by, by naming out. And then if someone is not, or if there is a group that is not named in there, you know, is that, I, I, I mean, I see a point, and that's, and that's something that, you know, we, we can hash out. But I agree with Mary Ann. I think we do not have
Time.
Not only the time, but, you know, with, with these ideas, I, I think it is a good idea to have two board members take this and go through that and keep it in mind, you know, the comments that, that we're making here, and loo- looking at the different ways that, you know, the, the resolution is being stated. You know, because we, but we have both long and short statements. Sometime, and I'm not saying in this case, sometimes less is more. You know, you make.
I think we would need more than two people. I mean, if Patty and I, I mean, I don't know, could it be Patty and I, or who, who's, who's volunteering to do it?
It could be any two. Well, see, we can only have two board members, otherwise it's, 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 it's a meeting. If we have three board members.
Okay.
You know, that, that's the, that's our roadblock there. So it it could be you and Patty, it, it, right, it would just have to be two.
I'm not against working with Patty, I'm just saying like.
No, I know, oh, I know, I know.
I just, like, do we need like a middleman, like, not a middleman, but like somebody that has a, like a you know, like a third voice or whatever.
Right, well.
One way I feel the other than the like, one other person that, you know.
I'm a non-board member.
Oh, I wasn't even thinking that, but yeah, maybe.
No.
No, because it's our, it's our resolution, so it has to be us.
Exactly. But what I was saying, what we can do is we can have two board members work on it, and then one of those board members can bounce it off any of the other board members, as long as that second board member is not part of that conver- is not in on a certain, I'm, is not in on the conversation.
Right, right.
Me at the same time. So, we can do that. Is there anyone interested to be one of, one of the two?
I am, I'm interested.
Who's that, Juliet?
No, that's Patty.
Patty, I'm sorry, I didn't.
I mean, I would, I would work, I mean, Patty and I could do it together.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, now let, let me ask the other board members. Was it Jackie or Mary Ann? Do you have any interest in being a part of, part of this?
No, but I'll look at what they look at, who they come to as far as their last draft or two drafts they come up with. I'd like to look at that.
Yeah, I, actually, what would, I think would be helpful is that Jackie, Mary Ann, Paul, you looked at like what was submitted and to like pull out, pull out what you thought was good in the five, from the five documents.
And then either contact you or Juliet?
Yeah.
Like, what are your, what would be your, not must haves, but what is important to you? What are, you know, doesn't have to be your resolution, but what are your key phrases that are important to you that maybe we could work in?
Yeah.
Correct.
Or like, the way it is, use one of them the way it is.
Correct.
Right, and that, and that's possible. So, so let's do that. If, if there's no objection, let's have Patty and Juliet work on this, and the other board members look over these, circle or highlight whatever you want in there, or what you think is important, cross out what you don't want, and then either submit it to Patty and Juliet by wait, today is Monday. Let's say by next Wednesday? Would that be fair? Would that allow you then enough time, or would you rather have it by Monday?
Oh, Wednesday's good. Wednesday's good.
Wednesday?
What's the date of that, Paul? Eight, three, eight, two, eight? Okay, next.
Uh, hold on, I got it ready.
Never mind, I'll look it up.
The fifth.
Thank you.
The fifth. So let's do that. Yeah, let's, let's do that. So by Wednesday, in this way, maybe Patty and Juliet within a week or two weeks, you could have it
Sure.
ready, some kind of draft so that we could look at, at the next meeting.
And I, I suggest that the other two know as well.
Right, I can let, I can let the other two know then.
Okay.
Um, I know Kit had expressed intrigue also, but I mean, with, let's we've only proceed with what we have here at the meeting, so let's proceed like this then.
Okay. Correct, sounds like a plan.
Okay, I think that's good.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, thank you all for your input on this. So let's not take any action on this, this was just a discussion item. So let's move on to the, thank you Patty, and thank you Juliet for taking that. Let's move on to the next item, which is the student parking fees for the fall semester. James?
Thank you, Paul. We are recommending to the board that student parking fee for the fall semester be waived, and the reason for that is we're starting remote learning, and we, we believe it's fair, it's unsure. We go to hybrid, the kids are gonna only come twice a week, and there's a chance as a COVID resurgence is a possibility, as you all know. So it's, it's, it's almost unfair to charge that dollar amount to our students and their family in this COVID era. And that's one reason. The second reason to you is when we are in hybrid learning, we want our students to, to encourage them to drive if they can, to avoid the bus. Therefore, there, it's safer in the bus, there's less kids in our bus, so that would be another reason to encourage them to drive to school and don't really have to worry about the fee. So let me just review that if I didn't explain that correctly or, or more clearly. Is, there's really two reasons. One is the the, the unsuredness in regards to our, our upcoming semester. We're gonna start off with remote learning, so therefore for at least four weeks, students will be, won't be parking here because they'll be at home, remote learning. And then we go to a hybrid schedule, they're coming twice a week instead of five days a week, which is you normally charge for their parking fees. So therefore, we believe that the best course of action right now is to waive that parking permit because it is so unsure and inconsistent.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Sounds fair.
Yes. Right, any questions?
Nope.
Okay, then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve to waive the student parking fees for the fall semester?
I'm making a motion.
I'm, I'm sorry, who's that?
It was Mary Ann, Patty, and Jackie. You pick.
You want.
Let's go with the Mary Ann and Patty then. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Fine, be that way, Paul.
I'll check you out for that one.
Mary, roll call please.
Peyton Hall.
Yes.
Regal.
Yes.
Ramirez.
Yes.
Jellwick.
Yes.
Weedman.
Yes. Okay, we move on to the committee reports. Benson Community Foundation, Juliet, I don't know. Any activity there?
We have not had a meeting yet. We hope to have a meeting in August. So, nothing.
And, okay. We'll look forward to that. And next one, the Finance Facilities Committee Meeting, Committee, Committee. Mary and I know, well, we know there's nothing going on there.
That's correct.
Okay. I A S B delegate, the only thing is, is the triple I conference has been canceled. So there will not be a triple I this year.
And that'll save the district some money.
There you go.
I'm sorry?
And that'll save the district some money.
Oh, yeah, that'll save us some money, yeah. So the only thing that is not known is what they are gonna do with the resolutions that have been submitted that are normally get voted on at triple I, so that will be resolved. The Fall I A S B Two Page Division Dinner Meeting for the Fall will be virtual. And that is being worked on right now. So.
And you're gonna deliver?
I'm sorry? Are we gonna deliver? Let me see what I can do, yeah. See, but that's gonna be a virtual and we'll have information forthcoming on that. Well, you could order out and then go to the virtual meeting. It'll be the same thing.
You're gonna deliver.
Yeah, and then I believe that was it. Tomorrow at one o'clock, if anyone's interested, there is a virtual there's a webinar regarding school opening. That will be for one hour. I believe it's at 1:00 P.M. if anyone's interested. And that's the only upcoming one that I know of.
And that's through I A S B?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
If, if, if you're interested, I can, I just saw the email. I can forward you that email, Jackie.
Please, thank you.
If, if you want, okay.
Yes, please.
Okay, will do. Len?
Just very short, Paul, and, and Board. Len, as you know, I forward the news and updates that they send the board members there, but you know, their updates are in regards to the regulating agencies from the state of Illinois from S B and I D P H, and I will continue to, to, to forward those guidelines to you. The next one there that I have here is NedSec. There was a Finance Committee Meeting on Monday, July 26. We discussed what we discussed earlier here, but for NedSec, it was, it was basically their tentative budget plan.
Okay, great, thank you, James. Okay, and that was NedSec also. Okay, and then the Policy Committee? Patty, I don't know, I don't think there's anything there right now, right?
Nothing.
Okay, then the next board meeting will be August 26th, 2020. And does anyone have any new business to discuss, or anything they would like to see discussed? Well, then if not, then we'll, we'll go into closed session. So may I have a motion, and it's second, to go into closed session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body. an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act under Five ILCS 120/2C1 and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representative or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Five ILCS 120/2C2.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you, Jackie. Mary, roll call, please?
Peyton Hall?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Yallowick?
Yes.
Weedman?
Yes. Okay, Jim, just let us know when we are in closed session and we will be.
Okay, thank you. So will that be virtual, James?
Yes, Zoom.
Be Zoom. Okay, great. Thanks. I'm sorry?
I will provide you with more details as we nail down the date and time.
Okay, very good.
Great, thank you. So we are back in open session. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Could I have a second? May I have a second?
Juliette said it.
Okay, thank you Juliette. Mary, roll call please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Motion has passed. Thank you all. Thank you for hanging in there. Thanks for all your time and support. And have a good night.
Have a good night. James, be careful going home.